Welcome back if you're online. Welcome back if you're on the phone. Governors are taking their seat. And I believe I promised the mic to Mr. Gould. Please, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. My name is Robert Gould, bar number 4353. I submitted to practice of law in the state of Idaho in 1968, Washington in 1969. I bring you greetings from plaintiffs' legal malpractice. I have labored in the vineyards of plaintiffs' legal malpractice for 50 years. I've tried cases throughout the state of Washington, over a half a dozen in Oregon, one in Idaho, one in Montana, one in Cleveland, Ohio, and one in California. I have also been privileged to provide professional responsibility and ethics advice to a number of lawyers and law firms in the state of Washington. I was also privileged to be on the RPC, now defunct RPC Committee, non-consecutively for 12 years. I am here in support of this proposal. Gentlemen on the phone mentioned the earlier attempt under Bill Gates II, and he said it was '86. I'll take his word for it. But I spoke in favor of that, but in a subdued manner because I am concerned about my bias. I am certainly biased in favor of mandatory insurance. I'm going to be a little bit more vociferous this time around because I'm on the eve of retirement, and it's not really going to affect me. As Mr. Johnson, one of the first, if not the first speaker, mentioned, over the 50-plus years, we have turned down literally hundreds of cases because of lack of E and O coverage. It is a real-world concern. I bring you from the trenches that real-world concern. I have also been privileged to represent an uninsured lawyer that I'm going to tell you a little bit about, and I have sued an uninsured lawyer that I'm going to tell you a little bit about. I have also served as shadow, behind-the-scenes, legal malpractice defense counsel for a number of lawyers and law firms in Washington. Let me tell you about the two uninsured, motorist Freudian slip, uninsured E and O coverage cases that have come to mind. We've handled several more than that, but these two are poster child for the issue that I submit is before this Board of Governors. The first one involved a $2 million, brand-new home on the bluff of Normandy Park overlooking Puget Sound and the Olympics. The property was in an HOA, Homeowners Association. It was built across two lots. The homeowners association, and particularly the next-door neighbor, objected to my clients building that home. He had the misfort— they had the misfortune of going to a South End personal injury attorney who did not know what he was doing. As a result of that, a King County Superior Court ordered that brand-new house to be torn down. Don't take my word for it. Take a look at the underlying case of Green versus Normandy Park Riviera Section Community Club, 137 Washington App., 665, review denied by the Supreme Court. Fortuitously, he went to Peter Eglick, who was assisted by Phil Talmadge, and got the Court of Appeals to overturn that and send it back down. He had to cut off three of his six-park garage to satisfy the HOA and pay them over $100,000. I took the follow-on legal malpractice case against that terribly negligent attorney without insurance, went to trial, RJC, jury and Judge Andrea Darvis. Judgment entered for over $1 million. That uninsured lawyer had to put up his home, an investment commercial piece of real estate, and money as a supersedeus to forestall collection of that judgment which was ultimately paid. I know because of—I know very well—his defense attorney, Sam Franklin, now retired of Lee Smart, who defended him and ironically was the subject of a follow-on legal malpractice case brought by that defendant attorney against Sam Franklin. Guess who Sam Franklin's expert witness was in support of his observance of the standard of care, yours truly? The case was dismissed. The second case that comes to mind is the case I defended for an uninsured Seattle lawyer, ironically brought by the estate of a former president of the Washington State Bar, her estate. Case went to trial, also coincidentally in the RJC, and thank goodness, a defense verdict was entered. But I know from the representation of that uninsured lawyer, the anguish, the emotional distress, the sleepless nights and fear that he went through. I don't need to tell this Board of Governors that we lawyers are first, last, and always fiduciaries to our clients, and it is that paramount fiduciary duty which, in my opinion, prejudiced as it is, mandates that this Board of Governors adopts this proposal. The case that I mentioned in Normandy Park happened a number of years before our Supreme Court handed down the case of Schmidt versus Kogan, 181 Washington, 2nd, 661, which allows emotional distress damages in certain specified types of legal malpractice cases. If there was ever a case that cried out for emotional distress damages, that was the case because that couple was under the Damocles sword for years of having to tear down their brand-new $2 million house. In my humble prejudiced opinion, members of the Board, this is a no-brainer. It is consistent with our fiduciary duty. We have a monopoly on the practice of law. Washington demands as a condition precedent for the issuance of a driver's license in the state of Washington mandatory automobile insurance—I hate to add and footnote, and I'm not an expert on this—or some sort of financial substitute for that insurance. It should be no less in the monopoly of the practice of law. As one enters this bar association, on the wall facing west, it says, "Our primary duty is to quote, 'serve the public.'" President Pickett acknowledged that, and I ask you, if that is our paramount first duty, why isn't this something that should be adopted with alacrity by this Board? I submit it should be. There has been a great deal of question about, my words, the effective disbarment of attorneys who won't be able to afford insurance. That is apocryphal. Has this committee gotten in front of it, as it should, before the May meeting, insurance underwriters who can speak to that factually? I heard the gentleman from Spokane talk in terms of the 4,000-member Idaho bar with not one of them being unable to get insurance. I have talked with two colleagues of mine on the defense side, and we postulate—and gosh knows we're not underwriters—if you expand the body of insureds by 2, 3, 4,000, whatever that number is, isn't that at least ab initio at the beginning going to have a tendency to reduce total premiums overall? I yield to underwriters with regard to that. Lastly, let me talk about a pragmatic consideration for this bar—for this Board of Governors. I've been told that I flunked diplomacy, but I have a PhD in candor. From what I read in the newspapers, this Board is a little bit in chaos, in dispute, from what I read in the newspapers. I also read in the newspapers and follow the Washington State Supreme Court, which, again, in my 50-plus years of experience, have issued some unusual issues over the last six weeks. I submit to you as a practitioner that this governing body of lawyers can help its role as representatives of the Washington State Bar community by adopting and recommending to the Supreme Court some sort of variance of mandatory E and O insurance. It's going to raise the esteem of lawyers in the state of Washington. I thank you, and I welcome your questions and, most importantly, criticism. Lay 'em on me.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. Governors in the room, questions or comments for Mr. Gould? And PJ Grabicki from Spokane has his hand in the air immediately. PJ.
I served on the task force, and I was probably the genesis for the formation of the task force because I button-holed the then-President of the WSBA and said, "Why aren't we dealing with this?"
Congratulations today.
Well, sometimes. I think individually—I think that what we're going to have to do here is—we're going to have to go back and address this issue of—I'm going to say—the solos who either can't get insurance or can't get insurance that's at all economic—as a task force. That's what I think we're going to have to do. And we're going to have to go back and talk to the major insurers and the brokers and find out what we can do there. Because we've heard from the insurers and from the brokers, everybody can get insurance. They've said that absolutely. We've had people come before us now and say, "I can't get insurance." In some cases, I can understand why they can't get insurance because their situation's very unique. In other cases, I'm mystified. We need to deal with that. And so, in my view, we're not yet in a position to recommend to the court or to recommend either a rule adoption or a referendum. We need to address that issue. But I think it is addressable. I think there are ways to do it, and I think we can find a solution within the next several months to that. In the meantime, what I will advocate for at the May meeting is that we go ahead and adopt some form of—I believe it's the South Dakota model—which mandates written disclosure that you don't have any insurance. There is statistical data that that did have a positive effect, and that's something we could do right now that would be pretty easy to do. But I do feel an obligation myself to try and address this issue of solo securities people, solo patent people and the like who say, "I can't get anything."
May I respond?
Yes. Please do.
In my 12 non-consecutive years on the RPC Committee, which was some of the most intellectually satisfying tasks that I've engaged in in the practice of law, I observed at times a group mentality. And there is, in human beings, a desire for stasis, an unwillingness to change, an unwillingness to explore new alternatives. I hear what you're saying, sir, but I, as a practitioner, fear that that will be—please take no offense because none is intended—an excuse to delay and do that which is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions in the room? Seeing none, question—yes, Alec.
Well, I'm just wondering for the—for our May meeting, you know, I think I would like to, at least here, from the industry, from the insurers. I'd like them to respond to those kinds of questions. You know, I'd like to know what's—the answer here, especially as it relates to solo practitioners. And then maybe we have to go back and do some work, but, you know, I'd like to understand that.
All right. Do you have anything, Bob, or any comment or question on that?
I yield to the very able Chairman, Mr. Spitzer, who may or may not be able to accommodate that reasonable request.
See what we can do.
Right. Because we are—okay, thank you. Any—oh, well, hold on. Did I ask on the phone? Governors on the phone, any questions for this speaker?
I have some questions holding, and this one is coming from Donald Graham.
And is this—a new question? New question. Okay. Bob, thank you. New question. Go ahead.
Actually, this is from Graham. I've been in practice as a solo practitioner since '93 or so. I've had malpractice the entire time, and I have had no claims, and I'm speaking in opposition to the mandatory insurance. First off, in the report, it says malpractice is, you know, an access-to-justice issue. But as mentioned earlier by one of the speakers, it is really a compensation issue. By the time someone needs to pursue malpractice insurance, justice has already been violated or denied. And you can tell that because the victims are emotionally involved, and they're—it is a grueling experience to go through a malpractice claim or litigation. So just having insurance doesn't protect the public from mistakes by lawyers, and people that have insurance make mistakes and the clients suffer regardless of whether you're uninsured or insured. Of course, there is monetary compensation available, but that is—does not protect the public from malpractice issues, which the bar, through its continuing education, testing, enforcement, monitoring requirements for—as we mentioned perhaps, they send the South Dakota notice to the members or to the clients that they don't have insurance, things like that. Those are all things. They could do public service campaigns, telling people to check their insurance, you know, they're lawyers, whether they have insurance and so forth. Having insurance to pick up the pieces after mistakes and malpractice is really, you know, arguably a spilt nail. It's just not forward-thinking, and if we want to be creative, we should get to the issues that probably all states are looking at, and only two states have done, which is, you know, do the insurance, mandatory insurance. You know, we're outliers. We're not paying attention to what the real issue is, is how do we assure that mistakes and care and so forth is taken? On another note, I think we ought to be trying to, besides realizing that malpractice happens to everybody instead of just the uninsured, also just urge that the—the word mandatory insurance just sounds so demeaning to lawyers. We're professions. We could have it as a minimum level of insurance if we go forward, and it sounds—it's much more professional and less odious than mandatory, like mandatory education. It's just demeaning to lawyers to make it mandatory. We're all professionals. We can do our minimum according to our peers. Also wondering about the two—the minimum level of insurance of $250,000, $500,000 or whatever, why that couldn't be a sliding scale based on the volume of your business? As a gentleman who is retiring, you know, he has a few thousand dollars, maybe could have 100, 300 or something versus the $250,000, whatever. It seems to me that you can have a $5 million practice, and $250,000 insurance isn't going to cut it. And if you've got a $5,000 practice, $250,000 is odious. So I'm just—even if it's only $3,000, it's still a lot of your practice. And especially when people are retiring, which I'm hoping to do—I'm trying to work out at my practice—you know, additional costs and increasing them over the term. It's nice to be able to retire and say you're a lawyer without having to just eat, you know, cost out of your pocket when you're an old guy. And then the last comment is, what is the big push for Washington to be such an outlier? There's only two states that have mandatory insurance. What is New York, California, Louisiana, Florida, whoever? What do they know that we don't, and why are they not concerned? They have just—they have probably—you know, many, many millions more people than us, and they're not addressing the issue this way. I think the comment about notice to clients and, you know, more emphasis by the bar on quality of practice and preventing malpractice in the first place beats trying to compensate people that have already been injured and maybe irreparably. If someone builds a $2 million house and it's torn down, the money is not going to satisfy them. It's just going to make—the lawyers are still going to have a bad name, and the bar is still going to be, you know, considered inadequate. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Governors in the room, any questions for the speaker or comments for the speaker? Hearing or seeing no hands. Governors on the phone, any questions or comments? And this is just for the governors on the phone? None. All right. Next speaker, yes. Thanks for being so patient.
Yes, hello. This is Ryan.
We're going to take one—our next speaker in the room, please. Hang—hold tight there, Ryan.
Bob Wayne. I practice here in Seattle. I've been a lawyer for 44, 45 years. For 42 of those years, I've also been a teacher, taught at the University of Washington Law School in trial advocacy, have taught for NIDA forever. And I've had to teach many lawyers about ethical issues and have represented a number of lawyers, but the majority of my practice these days is representing victims who have been harmed by lawyers. And to the gentleman who said that it isn't the pursuit of justice at this point, it isn't the—the harm's already been done, it's actually a new harm, and it's a harm which exposes—pulls the Band-Aid off, if you would, of the legal profession. I can't tell you how many times I've had to turn to somebody who's in tears and apologize for my brother and sister lawyers, for the behavior that they've endured, and for the losses, the very real losses, and the harm and the negative effect it's had in our profession. And of the people who call me, I doubt that 1 in 10 of them become a client, and there's a lot of reasons that disqualify them, that don't just have to do with the merits. But one of the major reasons that disqualifies a client is when I go to the bar website and I see the entry for insurance, for malpractice insurance, and I see that the attorney is uninsured. Chasing after judgments is not what I signed up to do. It's chasing after justice on the issue that I signed up to do. And this really goes to one of the exemption arguments that we've heard made here where somebody stood up and said, "Look, I have a lot of money," or "I have substantial assets, and I should be exempt." But whenever you've dealt with somebody who is uninsured, you find the negotiations are a great deal different. First off, you have to worry about where that money's going to go sideways, how it's going to be moved, not necessarily offshore, but to relatives or to places where you can't find it. And then you have to worry about how much of that great net worth that a person claims to have is in an exempt retirement account or perhaps in the homestead exemption in their home. And then when you get down to negotiations and you're trying to get the final dollar for your client, and the other side says to you, "Well, you better take this deal because I'm seriously thinking about bankruptcy." All of those things exist where you deal with somebody who's uninsured. The only place you don't hear those arguments is when you know that there's $1 million of coverage, $250,000 of coverage, or whatever coverage is on the other side. You know there's a pool of money, and the only argument that can be made is that it's a self-eating policy, and the more we argue, the more the defense costs start to reduce what's there. But that's not the same as, "We're going to go bankrupt, and you're never going to see a cent." I represented a young woman who was an immigrant to the United States, and she was over on one of these H5V visas teaching in one of our public schools. She was from Japan. And the attorney that she hired to deal with the renewal of her visa failed to do so. And as a result, the school district had to let her go, and she had to leave the United States, and she had to change her whole life and go back to Japan to live. Her damages were over $1 million. But the attorney who had handled this matter had $100,000 worth of coverage. Now, that was ponied up pretty quickly because they could recognize the potential for a bad-faith situation, but it was just a drop in the bucket, and it was not real justice. For those who are uninsured and for whom I have to turn down the case because there's not going to be money there or we can't assess at the beginning whether there is money, those people—those people, they go away and they say, "There is no justice." They lose faith in the system. And I don't know what to say to them except that maybe they're right. Maybe under those circumstances, there is no justice. Now, you could say that's true with a lot of people you deal with out in society. A lot of businesses you go to, they're not going to have insurance. But the difference is—and I think Bob Gould put his finger on it—the difference is, is that when we stand up and we raise our hand and we take the oath of attorney, we become fiduciaries, the highest duty recognized in the law, fiduciaries to our client. Now, I have another case I'm looking at right now, and I won't get into the details because it's too early. But I've gone to the website of this personal injury lawyer, and I've seen this lawyer promise how they faithfully act for their clients and how the client is important to them, and they'll be there at all times. And then I look and I see that they're uninsured. And I ask myself, is this person misrepresenting their true allegiance to a client if they go out and solicit people knowing that they do not have the depth, the money there behind them, the insurance behind them to assure that the client won't be harmed? And as far as substantial net worth, you know, it isn't that long ago that we heard about a person in our press who claimed an incredibly high substantial net worth, but the contractors who worked for him on the casinos in New Jersey ended up not getting paid, even though he was a person of substantial net worth. His name hopefully will escape me. So I get a little worked up about this. Now, I see that most of the comments that the bars received are negative to this proposal. And I can understand that. Whose ox is being gored? It is the person out there without the insurance, and of course, they're going to yell the loudest. 86% of us have voted by buying insurance. We don't see the problem in quite the same way. And so while many of them have been silent and have not come to this meeting and have not done something about it, that doesn't mean that the overwhelming majority of this is in support—or pardon me, in opposition—to this measure. Now, I've also heard people stand up and say, "Look, I've been practicing 30, 40 years, and I've never had a claim. I should be exempt, or I should have some great reduction in my amount." Well, at another time in my life, I was a private pilot, in addition to being a lawyer. And one of the things that we learned as private pilots was that during the first 200 hours that we flew, we were the safest we'd ever be. And for those people who were flying 250 to 350 hours, it was a book published. It was called "The Killing Zone" because so many of them perished at their own hands because of overconfidence or because they felt they didn't need to go through the checklist or to do the details. The fact that somebody has been doing this for a number of years is not immunity. No one has a claim until they do. And then when they have that claim, it can be very real. Now, I hear other people saying, "Look, we should have an exemption for retired lawyers," which reminds me of the language from the play that "the evil that men do lives after; the good is often turd with their bones." Well, the problem with the practice of law is the evil that we do sometimes is not discovered for many years. for many years after it has been done, after the lawyer has retired. And because of the nature of malpractice insurance, which is different than the nature of automobile insurance, it is based upon when the claim is made. If you don't have the insurance, on the day the claim is made, you're not insured. And that means for somebody who says, look, I wanna retire, that's why we buy tails on our insurance, so we can have that peace of mind. But if you're uninsured, if there's no tail, if there's no insurance at all, that doesn't mean that the harm doesn't continue even after you retire. And a retired lawyer can even be more dangerous than a practicing lawyer. Do they read the advance sheets? Do they have the issue coming up day to day? Do they know the developments in the law? It's, it's a very risky type of practice to do. I know, uh, you know, I'm sixty-eight years old and, uh, while I'm not thinking of retiring anytime soon, someday I will. I hope I never have to give up the title of lawyer. I fought very hard to get there and I'm very proud of it, very proud to be a lawyer. And I think a lot of retiring lawyers feel the same and they'll pick up some cases and they'll try to do some service. But the risk is just as great and it's not the volume of cases, it's the amount of the loss that's potential in any given case. I've heard people say, what if you're doing the work on behalf of a relative? That shouldn't, that should be exempt as well. Well, I just litigated a case in which uncle represented nephew and as a result of that, ended up with a substantial settlement against him and is now facing disbarment hearings before the Washington State Bar. At this point, it is just going to hearing, who knows what the penalty will be, if any. But nevertheless, the point was made before the Superior Court Judge, of course, the relative, the nephew was more likely to believe the uncle, particularly because he was the uncle. Does that mean that the person should be exempt? Does that mean that that should be an area that we carve out from liability? I, I really don't think so. And we've heard from victims, or a victim, on behalf of a class of victims, who are being outshouted by lawyers who are concerned about their ability to continue in the practice of law. Uh, I can understand the argument on either side. I could really understand it. But the committee that labored very hard has given you alternatives. And one of the alternatives is an Oregon alternative, which is a universal insurance through some form of public entity, if is, in the language of 2020, Medicare for All. It is administered broadly, it has the lowest cost of administration. And for the speaker who spoke to us over the, uh, the speakerphone, who talked about the gross revenues that were gonna be made by the insurance companies, if the bar association could make those gross revenues, you could lower my damn dues, you know? So there is an alternative. And when you have that universality of insurance, with a broad pool, the rates are going to be lower for all. Now, the last thing I wanna mention before I go is that I think that the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not enough. And I say that based upon my experience handling malpractice claims. I don't wanna speak for Mr. Gould, but I know that many malpractice lawyers set a minimum amount that they will take as a malpractice claim. If it's below that amount and it's done on a contingent fee, there's not enough money to justify it because insurance companies don't roll over and hand you the check. There are often heavily fought cases. And frankly, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold is too low. Now, I spoke to Mr. Gould about that and he said, yeah, but at least it's a start. At least it's a start. The problem is, it might also be a finish. Because I haven't heard of Oregon raising their amounts, I haven't heard of that type of progression. I think it's sort of like saying, we've accomplished it, the day is done, we don't really have to do that. And I've also heard the argument, well, why don't we just embarrass the hell out of lawyers and make them put in their letterhead that they're uninsured? Well, you know, that's certainly a step toward it. But what it doesn't answer is the problem when they become uninsured after they've done the harm. I go to lawyer, they malpractice on me and the next year, they don't buy insurance? Fine, they're telling everybody about it. I'll know that when I go to Mr. Gould and ask him to represent me, that I'll have to tell him that they're uninsured. But it doesn't answer the question, it doesn't provide the security, it doesn't put the money there. And I'm not sure it's the ultimate remedy. What I'm afraid of is that too many people will say, okay, we've solved it, let's not move to the next step. The next step has to be a pool of insurance, whether either through the private market or through the public pool. And I speak to you on behalf of the victims who have called me and who I've counseled over the last many years. And I say, it's time to do something. We are fiduciaries. Thank you.
You, stay there for just a moment. Governors in the room with questions or comments? Yes, Kyle?
Thank you for your comments. What do you say to the, the folks who say, it's just way too expensive to set up what Oregon set up? Does that really give us an alternative?
Yeah, I think that's a very valid point, that it costs money, there are a lot of startup costs. The question is whether there's money on the backend and a way to finance it to get there. And those types of business decisions are beyond my, uh, my knowledge. All I can say is that if there's a pool of money to be made ultimately, there's a way to get there. But it might require a lot of effort and a lot of service. It's easier, it's really easier to say, go to the private market, here's the rule, buy your own private insurance. And there are those in this country who absolutely would oppose any Medicare for All type of approach to it, who would say, what are we gonna do about the private markets? And I would assume the private insurance companies fought in Oregon to prevent that from happening, uh, 'cause there was money involved. Uh, it's, it's a, uh, you know, it's, it's not an easy road, but what I'm saying is, don't throw away the concept simply because people are standing here and saying they don't think they can get the insurance. Consider Plan B. That's a way to make sure that they can get the insurance. I haven't heard anybody of the opponent stand up here and say, well, victims just should take their chances, we don't care about them. What I've heard is, think about me as well. And there is a plan that thinks about them as well. It's Plan B.
Thank you. Any other questions in the room? Okay, and this is just for governors, please. Governors on the phone, questions for our speaker?
Go ahead, Ryan.
Is there a governor on, on the line? No, okay, hold one sec. Um, I, I just, I don't hear anybody. I wanna say thank you. And I, I often, I wonder, um, how quickly we would move to enact mandatory malpractice insurance if we heard from the millions of consumers, uh, what their thoughts were. Um, because it's often, we hear from lawyers and I get that and it matters to lawyers and I get that, but there are these, this public that I agree with you and I just take your comments to heart, how we are, we are sworn to serve the public and yet we hear so little from them. And I know I conducted, probably should never do this, my own little research polls amongst family and friends and I ask them the question of what do they think about lawyers having malpractice insurance? And I get two responses real quickly. One, they're stunned that we don't have it, that it's not mandatory. And then the next response is, well then, um, what am I supposed to do if you malpractice me? And I, I don't like the answer, uh, pretty much nothing. So, um, I think if we had those folks, if we heard from them, boy, we'd probably be a lot quicker, uh, to enact this. And I know they're out there, they're just, they are definitely silent, um, to a certain degree, 'cause we conduct our affairs amongst lawyers. And that's a whole nother subject that opens a can of worms that we ought to dig into at some point in time. So, uh, thank you so much for your comments, appreciate it. All right, next speaker in the room, Nancy, please, jump, jump in and then we'll go to the phone. Nancy Hawkins, very good to see you. You've been, you've been very patient.
I, I speak with two hats and I'll start with my hat. As a member of the Family Law Executive Committee, our section met, uh, this weekend and considered the proposal and our recommendation is that there not be mandatory, uh, insurance coverage for lawyers. Uh, the com, the discussions were sort of on the line of, oh my God, not another requirement. Too many burdens on solo practitioners already and most of us are covered by insurance. So this is, as, as someone's already said, uh, a solution in search of a problem. And then now I'm gonna switch to my own hat and add a few more comments. I don't think there are millions of victims of lawyers who aren't covered by insurance. And first, I read the report, I thought it was a fascinating report, reflected a lot of hard work. Always there's gaps in people on the committee or recommendations and we're hearing about some of those. But the good news was that, I think it was around eighty-five percent of lawyers are covered by insurance. I'm one of those, I've been a lawyer for thirty-seven years, always had insurance, believe in insurance, want everyone to be insured. But as I was listening and thinking about this on my long drive back from Tri-Cities this weekend, I also thought about, it's not just about clients as victims, it's also about lawyers as victims in this system. As a family law lawyer, we are typically the people that get complained about most often. Why is that? Because the subjects we work with are so important. They are also not, uh, solved by a check. How is anyone gonna determine that I screwed up and as a result, someone lost custody of their kids? We give judges, uh, almost unlimited discretion in the rulings that we seek. Yet, someone is always unhappy. In fact, we always say, if both sides are unhappy, that's a good day, we've solved the problem properly. Because it's very rare for one side to be completely wrong and the other side to be completely right. So do we end up in those family law situations with both people suing their lawyer because if you had done this, if you had done this differently, I'd have won. I'd have custody or I'd get to live in the house or, or whatever the, one of the fifty issues that we deal with in each individual case, however they, they come out. So I can see that if there's mandatory insurance, so there's just a little more pot of money, um, that more people will sue and that disproportionate burden will probably fall on family law lawyers. But, uh, there were several comments in a, about, and in the report, that insurance, this mandatory insurance is gonna be at a reasonable amount, uh, maybe three thousand a year, people have differing amounts, maybe you start out at fifteen hundred when you're a new lawyer and it goes up a little, but it, but it's always available. The, those premiums are the, just the tip of the iceberg for the costs if you are sued. So with all due respect, I don't wanna encourage more lawsuits. And I understand that some clients will not have a remedy, but the burden on lawyers is more than just that premium. First of all, we have deductibles and most of us, our deductibles are somewhere in that twenty-five hundred to ten thousand dollars per claim issue. I know because I had a claim and I just had somebody call me, where's my twenty-five hundred dollars for your deductible? Uh, and I had a miserable experience being sued by, not sued, a claim that I self-reported, uh, by an opposing party. An opposing party, by the way, that's filed eighteen bar complaints against me. Um, all dismissed, but still, can't tell you how many hours that has cost me. But then, this claim for, did I make a mistake in a sentence that led to some consequence to her? Again, not my client, but the opposing party. I self-report. My insurance company appoints a lawyer. Do they appoint a lawyer with thirty-seven years' experience in family law? They appointed someone who had zero experience in family law. My issue was about a bankruptcy stay issue. Did they appoint someone that had any experience at all in bankruptcy or bankruptcy stay issues? They did not. So for the cost of my insurance, I got a brand-new inexperienced, uneducated lawyer. And so where in this process of mandatory insurance, is there going to be a requirement that we get appointed competent counsel by this mandatory insurer? Or are they simply left to appoint whoever they want and we're stuck with it because that's, 'cause, 'cause it's a requirement for us? Today also happened to be the day that I got my twenty-five-page application to renew my insurance. Except I can't renew because the insurance company, when I complained about getting an inexperienced counsel on this claim by an opposing party, sent me a letter saying they weren't going to renew me, after being with that company for many years. This was not some big thing where I missed a statute of limitations or killed the opposing party or did something that resulted in some huge damage. But now, I have to file, I have to, started working this morning on my twenty-five pages and revealed to an insurance company, a question I've never seen before, about what were my three highest debts for running my practice last year and the year before and the year before. And any number of other new questions that, um, frankly, none of their business. How I run my business, how much I pay my staff, why should that be their concern? Did they have to provide me with any information? Did they have to tell me they would give me competent counsel? Did they have to tell me, uh, how many hours I would have to research my own case to tell that inexperienced lawyer how to do her job? No. So this, so far, this mandatory insurance seems very one-sided. And of course, it's very personal to me today. It seems to me that maybe there's a way to encourage more law, if we're really concerned about that fourteen, fifteen percent of lawyers that are non-insured, and assuming that they're all incredibly incompetent, so they're the source of all the problems, can we find a way to encourage them to get insurance rather than force other people who, for whatever reason, are choosing to be uninsured? And I heard some valid reasons why some people are unable to get insurance or unable to get it at a reasonable rate. And I do put some of the blame on clients. If you hire somebody to represent you, building a house with the, with the homeowners association and the person has no experience in it, doesn't some of that fall on the client? I wouldn't want one of my friends, one of my relatives to hire a lawyer who had no experience in their field. So there's a little bit, should be a little bit of buyer beware. And it sounds great to say that we have this higher purpose, some sort of godlike purpose of protecting our clients from day one till the day they die. But we're just people too and we are also just business owners. And most of us work many, many, many hours representing people who, by the way, don't always pay us. So what part of this, you know, we talk about how they, they don't have any method for compensation if we screw up. What if we do everything right and they get a great result and they still don't pay us? Because some of us are such good-hearted people that we stay on those cases because after all, we're not allowed to withdraw if they're not paying us, if we're a month before trial, two months before trial. So we end up doing that, somebody owes us twenty thousand dollars and then we're encouraged not to sue them when they don't pay, 'cause otherwise they'll file a complaint against us. So let's look at it from the business owners, the, the business attorney, um, the solo practitioner's point of view. It seems like we, we're getting the short end of this deal. I guess I agree that older lawyers aren't any better than anybody else, although I do like to say that I have been a lawyer for thirty-seven years and I do think I'm better than I was thirty-six years ago. But I also don't necessarily remember everyone's name when I, uh, meet them for the first time. But I also run a neighborhood legal clinic in Seattle. Six-thirty tonight, we'll see, uh, I think about fourteen clients tonight and help them with their legal problems for free. And I have a number of older lawyers where they're retired and this is what they do to keep going and still be contributing. And I've had two of them tell me that this will probably be their last year because if mandatory insurance goes through, they're concerned that they will not be able to be lawyers anymore. And if they don't get some sort of differing fee structure for, um, for being able to proudly retain that title of lawyer when you're seventy-five years old and not practicing anymore. So- So in addition to that separate issue of can't we find a way to let those people still be lawyers for a lesser fee, we also need to find a way to take advantage of their willingness to do, to do pro bono work. And then my final point, uh, and it really will be my final point, not my final point, and then I go on for four or five more points. But my final point is, think of the optics and the politics, a common theme of mine. The Board of Governors recently put a stop to a fee referendum that a lot of members wanted. They do other things that a lot of members don't want. One of the speakers talked about all the things in the paper about the bar associations in turmoil, the Board of Governors is, uh, hateful and all the negativity we've been seeing. Do you really think imposing another mandatory requirement on the bar association who is, based on reading what's happening in Olympia, worried that they might not be able to be lawyers at all because they don't understand what's really going on there? Just think of the politics. Is this the good time to impose something mandatory on a bunch of people who are already having sort of a negative feeling about the bar association, the Board of Governors, because they don't really see the difference or what the mix is? Maybe it's time to just keep this, keep this in our pocket for a while. Think about it later.
All right. Hang on there, Nancy. We'll see if any of the governors have questions or comments for Nancy. Alec?
Nancy, I just had one, uh, question for you and that's where, I believe you were, you were saying if we add, uh, more people to the pool who would be, um, have insurance, we will also see an increase in claims. And I was just trying to understand why those two are tied that way.
Well, we heard, we heard from a lot of plaintiff's lawyers about the cases they couldn't bring because people didn't have insurance. And so I think then it goes without saying that if those victims had access to an insurance fund, there, there would be more cases. But I also don't accept the idea that the 15%, 14% that are uninsured are the source of all the problems. I think there are claims made against lawyers who make mistakes and that are covered by their insurance. I'm not one of those lawyers that's going to stand here and say I've never had a claim that had merit. I missed a deadline for extending a judgment many years ago, self-reported, was handled through my insurance company. I believe in insurance, but I don't do it because it's my, uh, responsibility to the world at large. I do it because I have a house and I don't want to lose it.
Any other questions, governors in the room? Seeing none, how about online? Any of the governors, just the governors online? Do you have questions for Nancy? Hearing none. Nancy, thank you for your comments. Appreciated. All right. In the room, do we have any other folks who want to speak to this issue? If not, we're going to jump to the phone. There is, yes, sir, please, one, one, you bet, sure. And then if you could, absolutely, and, and try to be brief. I know I'm kind of going second time around and then I got to go to the phone. Yes, sir.
Brief. And again, I want to thank all of the diversity of opinions of how to move forward on this issue. I want to thank the board again for allowing public comment, not just from the membership, but for the only victim here that is actually standing up to speak out and the only member, the true member of the public to actually speak out. Because I want to be clear again, that first and foremost, this board is serving the idea of the state. It bears the great seal of Washington. It is a state institution and is a public of the state. And you are charged with representing the over seven and a half million people. And when you go to bed tonight and when you think about how to vote and how to move forward as a board, I want you to think of the preponderance of people that you can help serve and protect with a basic level of protection. Because that's what this is. It's very basic. Because I'll tell you, the small sum of money that's being proposed is nothing but I wouldn't have given up for the lives that's been damaged, utterly damaged and hurt. That money, could barely touch it. And I imagine it can barely touch it for the other victims too. And I want to be respectful that sure, it's going to be a financial burden mainly for solo practitioners, but it is an absolute honor and privilege to be able to work in the area of law, not a right. Rights are for all of the citizens, for all the seven and a half million of the citizens of the great state of Washington. And it is an honor and privilege to be able to hold our hearts, to be able to advocate for ourselves when we can't, to be able to protect our civil liberties. And there should be a very basic level of protection. So again, thank you for your time on this and thank you for the very hard leadership that this burden bears. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Your comments are very much appreciated, taken to heart. Yes, sir, additional, no, no comment. Okay. All right. Online, do we have any, uh, comments online or anybody in the queue? You're next, if you are there. We're going till five, come hell or high water.
We do have a question. Uh, we have several questions holding. This first one's coming from Thomas.
Yes, hi, this is Thomas Magrit. Can you all hear me clear?
We can, Thomas. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, I wanted to broaden the discussion today a little bit, uh, because I've, I've been doing a lot of research on legal malpractice lately, on the standards of care and on the different remedies that have been proposed. And I have a final report of the, uh, task force right in hand here and have looked at all the solutions. And I, I do want to compliment the task force on, uh, fulfilling their mandate to at least, uh, get, get everything, uh, before it's all. But I think that the Board of Governors has to visit this in a sense as, as if they are the ones making final recommendation. It's not the business of the task force to, in a sense, sum it up with a drumbeat and if, and after looking at all the different, uh, options that are available, simply conclude that malpractice insurance is the way to go. So I want to, I wanted to make several comments today. One is on the question of, of how the public perceives lawyers. We're, we're constantly looking at ways to arrive at a seamless web where perfect justice is possible. And we have a requirement of law school and then we have follow that up with a bar exam and then we follow that up with CLE compliance and we follow that up with the ability to, to make complaints against attorneys for violations of the ethics codes. And now we move to malpractice as the, as the final step in this, in the web. And yet at the same time, the mere existence of malpractice and the fact that it's remedial indicates that there's no way to guarantee outcomes all across the board, particularly in something as uncertain and as contradictory as the law is. It may be a small point, but, but when the Supreme Court of the United States on very major issues that affect the lives of millions of people, uh, break up to five to four splits on almost, uh, most of the stuff that they do that, that really gathers public inertia and contempt, uh, how are we going to have the same certainty when it comes to, to other minor matters? This question of the makeup of the bar should be considered very carefully. A one-size-fits-all approach is very dangerous because it's, it's going to be, be either too much for some areas of practice or too little for others. And several people today have commented on that. And it's going to affect different segments of the bar differently. Young people that are trying to establish a practice, older people who are perhaps desiring to retire, uh, people in the middle zones that are, that are expanding their area of practice. All of these are, are moving targets. And the idea that we can shoot just one giant shotgun blast is going to answer all these questions and resolve all emotions, I think is, is, is a case of misplaced idealism. Um, I'd like to talk about the question of the passion that the, some of the speakers have brought forward today. Uh, oftentimes this was bringing forth anecdotal evidence and anecdotes are always persuasive because they're emotional, they tell a story, they, they seem to oversimplify the situation and they demand immediate action. This is the reason why they should be looked at with very careful scrutiny because perhaps these are not generalizable across, across broad spectrums of other people similarly situated. Uh, and we see this in, in traffic accidents. Every, every, everybody, one person gets killed going up to the 7-Eleven and another person gets killed on, on the highway. Uh, they're different situations and each are tragic. And if you told it, that one thing, you say, well, the solution is everyone should drive 35 miles an hour, will never have another death on the highways. But once again, the idea of seamless web justice is just, uh, unattainable. And unfortunately, lawyers oftentimes find themselves a captive population and they, they're, they become, um, they come in a sense that, um, treated as though we're the cartilage of the legal system, as though the ultimate deciders of fact and the, and the application of law, which is the judges, uh, and then we have the general public and then we have lawyers that somehow link in that chain, but we're not the final link in the chain. And we can't, we can't always guarantee results. And, and one of the people questioned today said, uh, how do we know that there will be an increase in malpractice suits if this type of thing happens? And the answer is empirical studies, that when you have a pot of money waiting to be grabbed, uh, client dissatisfaction some, sometimes gets translated into a desire to sue the attorney. And oftentimes, uh, with, without a meritorious defense available to the attorney to, to be able to point out the obvious, which is that they cannot guarantee the result and that in many ways, the practice of law is more of an art than a science. And because they cannot guarantee the result, um, they can get caught in, in between and this, this tends to lessen the public respect for attorneys. It tends to put attorneys and clients in an, in an adversary position with regard to each other. So we demand, uh, fiduciary responsibility on the part of the attorney, but we don't make any demands upon the, the public to have a basic knowledge of how our legal system works and to force the attorney to, to qualify all the results that are available and have all the cautions, simply makes the attorney look weak. It simply says, well, if you, if it's all certain, it's all that, well, why am I even talking to you? Why, why can't you guarantee, why can't you work your magic and get this certain result that you, that we all expect? And then when we, we create remedies, we tend, as I said, to over or undershoot, uh, the, the mark. We, we, we feel good about ourselves because we've done something and the idea of something is better than nothing. But what if the something has so many things that have not yet been resolved that we don't have a basis for it? And the burden of proof clearly, when we have 48 states that have not taken this, this measure, it's clearly, the burden of proof should be a very high one. There should be something special about what's going on in Washington that calls for an immediate approach to this. And that there has not been even an advisory vote for the bar membership, let alone the dispositive vote, which was what brought it in in Idaho. To me, that's, that's dispositive right there. The, if we, if we're a self-regulating profession, we at least need to be heard from. And it shouldn't be just anecdotes that are piled together and put into a pie graph. What it should be is, it should be an actual vote on, on whatever final proposal the Board of Governors decides on. And I think this is a classic time to get more empirical evidence. We should look at individual practice areas. We should look at different regions of the country. We should look at the type of practice that people are undergoing. Uh, and we should look at the public perception. How can we educate the, how can the bar actually, uh, have a, have a, uh, have something that educates the public to be a little more cautious? You know, a checklist. Before you hire an attorney, have you answered these questions? And make, make the, make the person not just walk in as abated arms into the law office as though they have no, no ability to defend their own interests. Because in the last analysis, the, the, the client makes the decisions. They need to know this. And I would suggest then, what, what would be the proper remedy should be a phase-in approach. This doesn't have to be an all or nothing thing where, where one side goes away completely unprotected. Uh, I think the South Dakota approach of mandating full disclosure, uh, is an excellent idea. And I think that the, the approach that Oregon initially took, uh, of lumping people together, that, that Medicare for All approach, if necessary, would also be a good idea. And, but I think even better, we should have, uh, more of a, of a recognition in, in the, um, in the bar of the value of specialization, where people can, can bring forth some evidence for why they are qualified in this area and then why they only do this area of law. Because this is what they're trained for and this is where their experience lies. And people should be discouraged from, from experimental moving into other fields, even if they think they've met the standards of care. I also think targeted CLEs, particularly for targeted populations, would be a good idea. And just as we have mandated ethics CLEs right now, we could have mandated, um, malpractice CLEs to prepare us to avoid, uh, common pitfalls. And that would be an instantaneous way to, to both fulfill our CLE requirements and yet to target it on something that is now being taken so seriously that we're talking about, um, mandatory malpractice. And finally, I, I think that the, the role of the public, if, if we have a bar association, I don't know the, that's, uh, status right now of consumer organizations, but it seems to me that people that deal with lawyers on a continuous basis should have their own organizations where they, uh, for instance, scan attorneys and say, if you, if you have a, a question in this area, these, these attorneys would be, uh, people that we've looked at and we've, you know, this is our experience. We have these kind of generalized, um, attorney rating systems that are out there and they're certainly helpful, but they're, they're, uh, they're certainly not focused, they're not targeted. Um, I think it's ultimately up to the public to protect its own interest. I don't, again, I don't think lawyers need to underwrite, uh, the entire legal system simply because we're the ones that are trained to best navigate it. Uh, we're not perfect navigators and it would be arrogant to say that we are. And I think when we use language like privilege, we are assuming that, that lawyers have, are somehow favored children of the law, that somehow or other where we're all wearing 18th century lace and powdered wigs. And I don't think most of us are, and especially not the young attorneys that are deeply in debt for their, for their legal education. And I think we need to consider all of them. And, and before adopting an across-the-board approach, we should look very, very carefully at the viability of a phase-in approach and then look back and see what the actual results are. See what Idaho's results are. See what Oregon's results are. See if any other states move in the same direction and be in close communication with them. And out of all of this, I think we'll get a more equitable decision on this matter. So thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you. Governors in the room, any questions for this speaker? Seeing none. Governors on the phone? Any governors on the phone with questions for this speaker? All right. Uh, let me ask, how many folks are still on the phone with questions? Who are, who, how many in the queue?
Right now, we have nine.
Nine in the queue? All right. We're going to take those nine questions, but before we do that, we're going to take a very short five-minute break.